And I will ask Mata E, who is administering the commission today for a roll call vote. Or not a vote, sorry, just a roll call.
Good morning, Commissioner Brandcard?
Present.
Commissioner Candelaria? Okay, Commissioner Dominguez?
Present.
Commissioner Frey?
Present.
Commissioner Mike Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Modi? Commissioner Modi? Commissioner Patton? Commissioner Raider?
Here.
Right here. Saifrey called in sick share. Commissioner Thompson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Present.
Commissioner Wehio?
Here.
Commissioner Simlink?
Present.
Thank you. Sheriff Stringer?
Here.
Sheriff Stringer?
Present.
Yes, now I can hear you. Sure, you have a corral.
Great, thank you, Mata E. Next, we have the approval of today's agenda. Do I have any comments or requests or a motion to accept?
I move approval, this is Commissioner Brandcard.
Thank you, Commissioner Brandcard, do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Velazquez.
Thank you, Commissioner Velazquez. Mata E, please do a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Brandcard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Frey?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton? Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Raider?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wehio?
Yes.
Commissioner Simlink?
Yes.
Sheriff Stringer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of our August ninth meet meeting minutes. Any comments, questions, or motion to approve?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dominguez, I would make the motion to approve as presented. Second?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez, and then that was Commissioner Brandcard that seconded, and we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Brandcard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Frey?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain because I was not present.
Okay. Commissioner Raider?
I believe I was also not present, so I'll also need to abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wehio?
I'd also like to abstain since I wasn't at the meeting.
Commissioner Simlink?
Yes.
Sheriff Stringer?
Yes.
So there's three abstains, but I believe the motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have an opportunity for the public to comment. Do have, I'm not sure, I'll check with Mata E, has any members of the public requested to public comment through you?
I have not received any message from any members of the public, so I'm not at this point.
Okay, so no formal request, but any members of the public present today requesting to provide public comment? Hearing none and seen no hands. We will move on to the next agenda item. Which is the WQCC twenty-two dash twenty-one petition for review of the decision of the New Mexico Environment Department issuing groundwater discharge permit DP eleven thirty-two. Ratification of the appointment of Gregory Chikalian as hearing officer. So we have this agenda item on here today because there was a slight oversight in the motion. This was very confusing, we had a lot of different motions associated with this particular case. And in the process of getting all of those approved, we actually did not formally make a motion to appoint a hearing officer or to allow me to appoint the hearing officer who is available, so we need to ratify our appointment of Gregory Chikalian and have a motion to actually formally approve him as hearing officer in this matter, and I'll look to Counsel Sanchez to supplement my description. Go ahead, Counsel Sanchez.
Thank you, Sheriff Stringer, Sheriff Stringer, members of the commission. It's ratification in this instance because to add what Sheriff Stringer said is that subsequent to the August ninth meeting, an order was entered which appointed Mr. Chikalian as the hearing officer. So then that's the, that appointment is what the chair is asking the commission to consider for ratification, thank you.
Thank you, counsel, any discussion on the matter? Okay, any, Commissioner Brandcard?
I move we ratify the appointment of Gregory Chikalian as hearing officer in this matter.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Dominguez.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Mata E, please proceed with a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brandcard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Frey?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Raider?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wehio?
Yes.
Commissioner Simlink?
Yes.
Sheriff Stringer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Mata E. Next on the agenda is this one's a little tricky, so we're gonna have to be careful about this, so Counsel Sanchez, please keep us in check to make sure we're doing this absolutely correctly. But next on the agenda is the WQCC's twenty-two twenty-one petition for review of the decision of the New Mexico Environment Department issuing groundwater discharge permit eleven thirty-two. Citizens motion to reverse the issuance of DP eleven thirty-two for lack of subject matter jurisdiction. And this is presented by Lindsay Lovejoy, counsel for CCNS and HOPE. So counsel, Mr. Lovejoy, please proceed.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Brandcard.
Um, I believe we had a motion to stay this entire matter, so I'm not sure why we're hearing this
that
motion to dismiss right now.
That's exactly why this one is a little tricky, so I wanted to give Mr. Lovejoy the opportunity to explain why he's added this to the agenda. And then I was going to get into the duplication of our approval to review and then stay the matter. But I wanted to provide Mr. Lovejoy the opportunity. So that's kind of how we're proceeding, but I'm certainly open to discussion on the matter, and I see Commissioner Dominguez would like to also weigh in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To kind of spin off of Commissioner Brinkert's question. I guess my primary question is there's been, the motion's been filed, there's been briefs by both parties and then a follow-up brief by the petitioner. I'm assuming we're not gonna fully hear the briefs to a lengthy extent. But that's my, that would be my question possibly for you and for Counsel Sanchez. If, if we're fully hearing the a repeat of the briefs that were filed, read, it seems like a duplication that we're gonna go to too great of an extent there. I think all the commissioners have received those and read those.
Yes, thank you, it is certainly not my intent to have those briefs explained. I just wanted to give Mr. Lovejoy the opportunity to present the agenda item, but I will ask for it to be a very brief sort of explanation as to why the agenda item has been requested. But before we go there, we'll look to Counsel Sanchez who had his hand up and just took it down.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to address Commissioner Dominguez's quest that I commented. I would concur with both Commissioner Dominguez and with the chair. I, it's subject matter, the matter of subject jurisdiction, certainly the matter raised by Commissioner Brinkert, are questions of law, not of fact. I believe the commission has had an opportunity to review the motion, the responses, and the reply. And so I think what's appropriate is a a short opportunity for all of counsel to speak to the present issues if, if necessary, I don't know that we need to do this that formally, but we can certainly stipulate to allow each of counsel for each of the parties a certain amount of time. So there's a balance or equity in the presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sanchez. So, Mr. Lovejoy, we will ask that you present this agenda item and keep the presentation very brief, limited to, I would say, five minutes or less to cover this item, and then we can allow the other counsel the same opportunity. But we are not going to sort of argue the merits of the case during this, just sort of an explanation as to why you requested the agenda item, please.
Well, this, this motion is timely and appropriate. Basically because it goes to subject matter jurisdiction. And in the opening brief, we quoted the State Supreme Court saying that jurisdiction of the subject matter may not be conferred by consent. It's a fundamental consideration at all stages of any proceeding. And will be noticed by the court upon its own discovery or at the suggestion of any party. From whatever source challenged, the court must pause, consider and determine its jurisdiction before proceeding further. So it's timely now, even though there's a stay. The motion is quite simple, really. It's based on the Water Quality Act provision entitled Limitations, which says that the Water Quality Act does not apply to any activity or condition subject to the authority of the Environmental Improvement Board pursuant to the Hazardous Waste Act. And the provision goes without saying, in a sense, because the Hazardous Waste Act is authorized by EPA to enforce the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act. And as such, has the force of federal law under forty-two USC sixty-nine twenty-six. And the Water Quality Act is state law. Under the supremacy clause of the Constitution, the federal law prevails and is supreme. But the legislature made certain of this by enacting seventy-four dash six dash twelve B of the Water Quality Act, which eliminates Water Quality Act jurisdiction for any activity or condition regulated under the Hazardous Waste Act. It's agreed and admitted in this, this proceeding that the radioactive liquid waste treatment facility manages hazardous waste. It's also clear that the Hazardous Waste Act directs the EIB to issue regulations concerning, one of them is requiring each person owning or operating a facility for the treatment, storage, or disposal of hazardous waste to have a permit issued pursuant to requirements established by the board. The RLWTF is required to have a Hazardous Waste Act permit. Doesn't, of course. The EIB has also enacted or adopted regulations controlling in detail the management of hazardous waste. As relevant here, they require that the construction of a hazardous waste facility to be authorized in a public process, including the possibility of a hearing. And mandating the safe operation in detail of tanks and piping systems. And there are special provisions concerning seismic safety at the plant. And these constitute the exercise of the authority of the Environmental Improvement Board pursuant to the Hazardous Waste Act in the language of seventy-four dash six dash twelve B. These regulations are not optional. They apply by force of law. And the commission is bound by the law. Now, the commission, in light of the application of the Hazardous Waste Act, should rule that the NMED has no jurisdiction under the Water Quality Act to regulate this facility. And the proceeding should, the permit should be reversed. Now, there's a few points in the briefs by the permities and NMED that I want to point out.
Mr. Lovejoy, I'm going to ask you to wrap this up relatively quickly, please. It has your five minutes.
Okay. It's claimed that the activities of the RLWTF would be subject to the wastewater treatment unit exemption. And this is slightly a red herring. And it's known that the way the RLWTF works, the, the treated water may be discharged through an outfall, but it's set up to function to evaporate the treated water through the mechanical evaporation system and soon enough the solar evaporation tanks. Under the permit that applies to the lab as a whole, it is provided that, and I will read you this paragraph, if I may. The permities shall discharge all treated wastewater from the TA fifty RLWTF through the outfall permitted under section four oh two of the Federal Clean Water Act. Or as otherwise authorized by the terms of an applicable Clean Water Act permit that regulates the treatment and use of wastewater. And it says, if the permities intentionally discharge through a location other than the permitted outfall or as otherwise authorized, they will fail to comply with this requirement and as a consequence, the wastewater treatment unit exemption will no longer apply to the RLWTF. Now, it's the present status of that facility that it discharges primarily to these evaporation units, and so it's not eligible for the wastewater treatment unit exemption. There are also references to some discharges which have occurred recently.
Mr. Lovejoy, if I may, I'm going to interrupt you. We do have the briefs that explain all of this, and as part of your motion to request a review of the permit, the commission, the outcome of that process, which we've already agreed upon and assigned a hearing officer, can be that the commission shall sustain, modify, or reverse the action of the department based on the review of the evidence and the arguments of the parties and recommendations of the hearing officer. So these arguments would be part of that proceeding, and therefore the request from you today was to explain why you had presented this agenda item when we already have a motion to hear the evidence and consider a decision on a reversal of the permit. So if I can give you just one more minute to wrap up that particular question that we're asking you to explain, and then we'll provide other counsel opportunity to have a chance to speak as well.
Well, I can do that quickly. Thank you, the, the proceeding as a whole is, as I understand it, stayed. The subject matter jurisdiction issue is always a live one and can be presented at any time. We are concerned that if the issues raised on our motion are folded into the proceeding as a whole, that the ruling on that may be deferred indefinitely, and we don't think that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Lovejoy. I will turn to let's see, sorry. Counsel Wexler, I believe, is next for five moments to provide another explanation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll keep it brief and I'll keep my remarks to the procedural issues you asked about, I think the motion to reverse is procedurally problematic. As you know, neither the department nor the applicants have had an opportunity to respond to the petition. The motion to reverse is simply attempting to circumvent the motion to stay, as the commissioner has already acknowledged, this matter has stayed, when a matter has stayed, all matters, including motions, including jurisdictional matters, are paused until that stay is lifted. The, here the petitioners have not asked for permission to alter that stay in any way. The rationale for staying the matter was to get the benefit of the EAB proceeding. In part because, I think as Mr. Lovejoy just acknowledged, that could be dispositive for at least one issue that's pending before the commission. And that rationale applies in very strong force to the motion to reverse, which raises the same jurisdictional issues on the Hazardous Waste Act as were raised in the petition and as were briefed and discussed by the commission in the motion to stay. So the commission has already addressed these issues, there's no need to revisit them, and the motion to stay should be enforced. And as the last matter, I would say this, this issue could be sent to the hearing examiner, so that when the EAB proceeding concludes, which we expect to be by the end of this year, the hearing examiner could make a recommendation to the commission in the first instance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You? You're muted.
Sorry. I will now turn the floor over to Mr. Atencio for that, for his five minutes as well.
Thank you, Sheriff Stringer, members of the commission, I don't have very much to add to what Mr. Wexler said, I would agree with that and concur. The only thing that I would add is that the question of subject managers, subject matter jurisdiction in this particular proceeding would be a reminder that the proceeding is the issuance of a discharge permit by the Mexico Environment Department. And pursuant to the Water Quality Act, the permitting actions are subject to review under seventy-four six five, specifically O, P, and Q by the Water Quality Control Commission. Now, whether the department got its permitting action ripe or not, is, is really the merits of this case. And as Mr. Wexler pointed out, neither the applicant nor the department have had an opportunity to respond to petitioner's opening brief in regards to whether the permitting action was correct or not. But as it pertains strictly to deciding or reviewing that permitting action, the proper venue rests with the Water Quality Control Commission, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. Counsel Sanchez?
Madam Chair, thank you. Counsel, the party has made several references to the motion stay. I just want to clarify for the record that there was in fact an order on that motion stay that was entered on August the thirtieth, so actually the, the proper reference, I think, is to the order granting the motion to stay rather than a reference to the motion itself, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Lovejoy, I see your hand up, we'll give you a brief moment to respond to that before we turn the floor open, or we open the floor to commissioner discussion.
Just this, thank you. Madam Chair, the proceeding before the EAB in Washington, before EPA, has nothing to do with the Water Quality Act. I heard Mr. Wexler say that the jurisdictional issue presented here is pending before that board, and this is simply untrue. That's all I need to say.
Thank you. I will now seek commissioner discussion. Commissioner Dominguez, I see you turned your camera on, do you care to make a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll try to keep this somewhat concise here. I think back to Commissioner Brinkert's earlier question or comment is, is somewhat either duplicates or overlaps the petition that was filed for review. Because as part of the authority of the commission for a petition review, the commission shall sustain, modify, or reverse the action of the department. So this motion is asking for a reversal of the action of the department. Which in my viewpoint is part of that outcome of a petition review itself. Where the commission has the authority to sustain, modify, or reverse. So without going through the petition review process and immediately going to an ultimate decision based off of a motion seems to circumvent due process that is already outlined within the commission's authorities. And I think any appellate court would view that as being potentially arbitrary, capricious, or so forth. so forth. So for the moment, I'll leave it at that and allow other commissioners to comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Commissioner Brankard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to hog the court here. But I agree with Commissioner Dominguez's analysis. But I also think that while I strongly disagreed with the motion to stay, the commission adopted a motion to stay, and I don't think this motion that's been presented today in any way overcomes the stay. Mr. Lovejoy referred to, the Supreme Court referring to, that you have to pause to listen to a motion to dismiss. We've already paused, so we don't need to pause again. So the whole case is paused, and this issue can be dealt with as part of the larger hearing later on this matter. Thank you.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And just as a quick follow-up, because this was filed as a motion, and I'm sure Commission Counsel will correct me if I'm wrong, but since it's a motion, I believe it's before the commission, and we wouldn't need to address the motion since it was not part of the original order for a stay. So given that, I would make a motion that we deny the motion that's under item number six before the commission today.
Counsel Sanchez?
Madam Chair, I would concur with Commissioner Dominguez. A motion, pertaining a motion to deny the motion that's being considered would be appropriate. And let me add, if I could also, just as additional perspective and to follow up on something Counsel Wexler said. When the petitioners filed their petition for review pursuant to 7465O and 20.1.316A, they very much invoked the jurisdiction, the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. The commission, under that jurisdiction, issued that order to stay. And more specifically, again, to add to what Counsel Wexler said, I don't, I not seen a motion filed to lift the stay or to modify that stay. And certainly have not seen a motion or any sort of pleading challenging the issuance of the order on that motion to stay. Thank you.
Counsel Sanchez, I have one follow-up question relating to that, which is, would the fact that they invoked it with their original motion to review the permit, would that have any effect on their ability to present the jurisdictional argument during that proceeding?
No, I don't know. And I wasn't present for the August 9 meeting, but I did review the audio video recording, the webcast recording, and it sure seems to me that the issue of subject matter jurisdiction, much in the same fashion that we've heard from Mr. Lovejoy today, was discussed at length before the motion to stay was granted.
Thank you. So we have a motion to deny the request. Do I have a second? I will second the motion to deny the request to, I always forget the word they use, reverse. So shall we have a roll call vote? Sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Brankard?
Madam Chair, I'm going to vote no, just because I think we should do nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes, and to explain my vote afterwards.
Commissioner Fry?
Madam Chair, could you repeat what we're voting on? I didn't get all the wording in there.
Sure. We are acting on a motion to deny the request to reverse the issuance of DP 1132. And Commissioner Dominguez, this was your motion. Please correct me if I missed anything.
That is correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Mike Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehio?
Yes.
Commissioner Simlink?
Yes.
Chair Stringer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lovejoy. Okay, next item on the agenda is WQCC 22-37, Frank Gallegos, Mesa Grande Development, and the Jones Family Trust Administrative Compliance Order Requiring Compliance and Assessing a Civil Penalty and Request for Hearing. Presenting this matter is Carl Sommer, Counsel for Respondents, Chris Atencio from the New Mexico Environment Department. Mr. Summers?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Can you all hear me?
Yes, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
No, you got it right. Summer is right. Summer is right. It's correct. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, we're here on our request for a hearing on the order issued by the director in the reference case. And I spoke to staff and counsel last week about the nature of this hearing. And it is, there are several issues that are raised in the order that are factual nature that have been contested. And in addition, we have begun trying to resolve this with staff. And if we cannot resolve it, then I think a hearing would be necessary to discern both the factual issues related to this order. And one of them is the number of parties. I note that the, one of the parties to this has not filed an answer, and that is the Jones Family Trust. I believe that, based on emails last week from Mr. Atencio, Counsel Atencio, that they are, the staff is in settlement discussions with the Jones family. And therefore, the answer was, I guess, the answer time was extended. I didn't see anything in the file, but I believe that's what the nature of the status of that is. So that's where we are. We believe a hearing should be held on this. But we also believe that we might be able to resolve this with staff to move this forward and get this matter. It arises out of a very old legacy. I'll call it a wetlands wastewater system for a mobile home subdivision in San Miguel County called County Acres Subdivision. And we are in the process of trying to close down that and connect these properties for all these owners to the city of Las Vegas. That's going to be a fairly lengthy and expensive process, but we are embarking upon that. So for the reasons that I've just stated, Madam Chair and members of the commission, we believe a hearing should be scheduled. But I think the Jones family is a necessary party to this matter. They haven't filed an answer. I don't know what their position is. And I don't know, I've never been in front of this board before, so I don't know what your process is for scheduling things. What might be most efficient is to put off the scheduling of this for a month to see what kind of progress we make with staff related to possible resolutions and what, if anything, the Jones family's position will be in this matter. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to you and whoever else might be making presentations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Summer. So I think just to address your procedural question, we have the request for a hearing in front of us today. And we could proceed with that request and assigning a hearing officer. And then the hearing officer could address all of those scheduling matters that you referenced. And it would go through that person to make those arrangements. So Commissioner Dominguez, I see you putting on your video. Did you want to make a comment before we turn the floor over to Mr. Atencio?
Yeah, just to add to the point that you made, which I believe you're spot on. But as Counsel Summer had indicated, if there's the potential that some things could be worked out, I think the typical process would be, as you stated, we would go ahead and schedule the hearing, assign a hearing officer. But during that interim process, because of the 90-day timeline, if the parties felt that things needed to be pushed out, they could come back next month with a request to waive the 90-day timeline. And that would address the 90-day timeline issue. Just throwing that out food for thought. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. I will turn the floor over to Mr. Atencio.
Thank you, Chair Stringer, members of the commission. I'll be brief. I don't have anything necessarily to respond to any of the factual statements that Mr. Summer made. I think we can get into those later if we get to a hearing. But at this point, the department does not oppose granting either, granting a hearing or scheduling or the appointment of a hearing officer. Department defer to the commission as to how it best wishes to proceed in that.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. So Counsel Sanchez, the one question I have, based on what Commissioner Dominguez brought forth, would be, would the parties need to come in front of the commission to waive the 90-day requirement? Or could that be done through the hearing officer if all parties agree to delay the hearing? That's allowable by our regs. So I just wanted to just clarify that point to make sure we know if they need to come before the commission, or it can be handled by the assigned hearing officer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can go back a little further with regard to Commissioner Dominguez's comment. Typically, I completely understand what is being discussed. If there's the potential that negotiations of the parties take us close to the 90-day deadline, we then would want to have a waiver at that 90-day deadline. But what the commission has done most often is, at the time that they accept the petition, set it for a hearing and appointed a hearing officer, they also ask the parties from the get-go, if you will, to weigh the 90-day limit. We can do that now, or we can do, as Commissioner Dominguez suggested, wait and see where negotiations go and see if those are taking us, or the commission, somewhere close to running afoul of the deadline. And yes, the hearing officer, I think, could, without coming before the commission, have the party stipulate to that waiver and enter an order accordingly.
Okay. Given that we're missing one party, is that waiver possible at today's meeting?
No, I don't think we want to ex parte anyone that's a party. It would be better if that party was involved in that particular concern.
Okay. Thank you. So I want to give Mr. Summer and Mr. Atencio an opportunity to speak to the 90-day issue before we proceed. Mr. Summer?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My party, my clients have no opposition to waiving the 90-day period. And I think that, as counsel has indicated, we could. If all the parties were here, we might all discuss it now. But since they're not all here, I would like the commission to know that, and for the record, that we have no objection to, and we would waive the 90-day requirement. But if that is best done or more appropriately done with a stipulation before the hearing officer, we can do it then. And that's our position on that matter.
Okay. Thank you for stating your position, Mr. Atencio.
Thank you, Chair Stringer. To the extent that it's necessary, the department would not oppose waiving the 90-day deadline. And to the extent that the Jones Family Trust needs to be notified, the department is happy to work with the hearing administrator or the commission administrator, as well as Mr. Summer and his client, to communicate that and involve them in making sure that that matter is taken care of.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion or a motion for consideration? Mr. Brankard popped up first. Commissioner Brankard?
Oh, let me try this. If there's no further discussion. Madam Chair, I move that the commission accept the request for a compliance order hearing in matter 22-37. And that, and this is your choice. We can actually appoint somebody specifically. Would you prefer that? Mr. Chicalian right now, or leave it to you?
I think we can appoint Mr. Chicalian right now.
All right. Then I also include in the motion, a motion to appoint Mr. Chikev Gregory Chicalian as the hearing officer for the commission in this matter.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second to the motion, Commissioner Dominguez.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Mari, can we please have a roll call vote to accept the request for hearing in WQCC 22-37?
Commissioner Brankard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fry? Thank you. Commissioner Mike Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehio?
Yes.
Commissioner Simlink?
Yes.
Chair Stringer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to agenda item number seven is next meeting unexpected upcoming matters. Oh, Madam Chair, Counsel Sanchez?
My apologies. I just want to house, I'll go ahead and prepare the order, the appropriate order. But just one housekeeping matter, I'm looking at the docketing matters for the Water Quality Control Commission. And the last matter that was docketed was 2233. I don't see the present matter, 2237, docketed on the webpage. And I'm just a little concerned with respect to the public's knowledge that we're having, this happened in one other instance, that the commission is hearing matters. our placing matters on its agenda, and the public can't go to the docket page and see those pleadings. So if we could try to get anything that comes before the Commission docketed beforehand, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sanchez. We'll work with the Office of Public Facilitation to ensure those matters are getting posted timely and correctly. Mari, will you please note that for us to follow up on?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I don't see it posted here either. Okay, so back to the, oh, Commissioner Brankard?
Well, I would second Mr. Sanchez's comment. It's helpful for the Commissioners to have that stuff on the docketed pages, too. But I'm on item number eight. I think you're on item number eight. Is that correct, Chair?
Actually, number seven, upcoming matters and next meeting items.
Yes. Okay. Do we need to have a talk, a discussion about what's going on with the TMDL? Case?
That's a good question. So that is slated for potentially one of the upcoming matters is that hearing, but it is kind of pending resolution. I know there were emails that have been exchanged, but because it was an agenda item on here, I haven't had a chance to thoroughly review all of those items. I know Counsel Sanchez weighed in, so I'd like to ask him if he'd like to make a comment on that upcoming matter, because it might change the the schedule for next month and what we put on the agenda as far as that TMDL goes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I sent a, basically, a legal memorandum to you concurring, or at least addressing the question that Commissioner Brankard raised during the August 9 meeting regarding Rio Hondo. And I agree that that case, along with the related 10th Circuit case, says very clearly that TMDL constitutes rulemaking. So I have to say that I question whether the petition that was filed is legally sufficient under the rulemaking procedures, and also the 60-day limit, the 60-day period for publication, notice publication of rulemaking would have would have not worked, because Counsel for NMED didn't address Mr. Brankard's concern regarding Rio Hondo or the holding until, I believe it was August 12, which would have run afoul of the 60-day time period. So again, my concern is whether the petition for the TMDL is sufficient if TMDLs constitute rulemaking. So I think I would I would recommend that environment revisit the legal sufficiency of the petition in light of Rio Hondo and the related 10th Circuit case. Again, this is an informational item. It's not on the agenda. We can't really act on that, because it isn't an agenda item, certainly not an action item, but that's my view of that matter.
Okay, so it sounds, thank you, Counsel Sanchez. I think the Office of Public Facilitation needs to sort of request that the department consider the legal sufficiency in light of this information, and perhaps bring a I don't know if it's ratified or revised petition forth at the next meeting, rather than having the expectation to actually hear the matter.
Madam Chair, one alternative is, I don't know how cleanly they could amend that petition. It may be preferable that they withdraw that petition and file one anew, but then again, that's their call.
Okay. Will it certainly inform them of this information that they need to consider? And I see we do have counsel from NMED present. So Mr. Atencio, do you want to weigh into this discussion?
Thank you, Chair Stringer. The counsel specifically assigned to this matter is not present. As Mr. Sanchez noted, this was not on the agenda if this matter would be discussed today. I think, based on what I'm hearing, in the direction towards the Office of Public Facilitation, it seems like such a direction might be considered an action on the department's petition. And I don't know that it's such an action that it wasn't properly noticed on the agenda without counsel present to discuss that would be entirely appropriate. But should the Commission want to move forward on that, I would respectfully request that that would be in some kind of writing or order, since it would be some kind of action on the department's petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. Counsel Sanchez, yeah, I'd look to hear guidance for procedures on how to best resolve this matter and move forward appropriately.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the alternative, I was just simply trying to be, I think, friendly to the department and suggest they revisit their petition. If they choose not to do that, then the Commission can certainly schedule the matter on what they've brought before the Commission, and then if the Commission then finds it insufficient at the time. But that seems like a terrible waste of the Commission's efforts and time. Thank you, man.
Okay, so just to think this through, we could, as a Commission, put the agenda item on and reconsider our original approval to hear the matter if the department doesn't take any action between now and then.
Yeah, and it's a bit of a conundrum, because it was set for the October hearing. If the Commission decides that adoption of a TMDL constitutes rulemaking, then we're going to get to the October hearing and not have had the requisite published notice or notice to the public published.
Okay, Commissioner Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't think we'll solve this by any means today. It's an interesting conundrum that has been brought up. Not that it will help solve the issue, maybe it complicates it more. Historically speaking, I do not believe the department ever approached TMDLs as rulemakings, although it has never really surfaced to the point of having to make that decision. So it would be a divergence from what the department is used to proceeding on TMDLs, and will likely require them to plan much further ahead. So from a historical perspective, I think it would provide the department some additional hoops that they would need to be put through. Now, that's not to say that, back to the original issue of is a TMDL a rulemaking, and I'm not going to opine on that. That would be for councils to figure out. But I believe your point is how does the Commission need to move forward on this? And I believe having it at least docketed for next month, even if it's a fairly short decision that has to be put off, at least having that docketed on the agenda provides the Commission the opportunity to discuss it and come up with a solution, which we can't do today, because it's not an agenda item. Discussion is fine, but we just can't come to resolution on it. Now that I've muddied the water for a TMDL, I will mute myself.
I follow all of that logic. The only thing that I can't reconcile in my mind is the public notice that needs to happen that could, well, I just don't know what to do with that public notice, quite honestly, and I think we can certainly address that at the October meeting. I don't know, Counsel Sanchez, do we need to? We can't really take any action. So the only alternative I'm coming up with is an emergency meeting to discuss this issue sooner rather than later, so we don't put the parties at any expense for a public notice for something that we need to reconsider potentially.
Madam Chair, I would be inclined to agree with Commissioner Dominguez. It's really, if you will, in NMED's court. If they take the view that they're reading of Rio Hondo and the related 10th Circuit case for them says that TMDLs are not rulemaking, then that's certainly their prerogative to take that view. My concern simply is that if they take that view, and we go to the October hearing, the October meeting, and the Commission then decides that TMDLs or the adoption of a TMDL constitutes rulemaking, then that presents the real problem and potentially a bit of a waste of the Commission's time and resources.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on the matter? Commissioner Patton?
Madam Chair, thank you. Counsel Sanchez mentioned a legal memo that he drafted on the Rio Hondo and the 10th Circuit case. Is that available for the Commission to review?
As far, I can certainly forward it to you. I think it's fine that the Commission sees it. I just haven't gotten that far in my queue of things to do yet.
Okay, that might be helpful.
Commissioner Patton, this is Counsel Sanchez. It was a privileged confidential communication to the Chair. Certainly, that privilege and extends to the Commissioners. I have no problem, in fact, would encourage Chair Stringer to forward that, and I included in that legal memorandum copies of both the Court of Appeals decision and the related 10th Circuit decision. So I'd encourage Chair Stringer to include those in the transmittal. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Sanchez. I will forward all of those informational documents and legal memo to all of the Commissioners immediately following this meeting. The, any further discussion on this matter? Last call. Looks like no. So the one other thing that I wanted to mention was the deliberations of the Cannon Air Force Base DP 873. We should have the hearing officers report that will inform us to deliberate on that matter during the October meeting as well. So I just wanted to note that for the record as a pending matter for the October agenda. Any other matters? Commissioner Brankard?
Yes, Chair. Madam Chair, I noticed that the first draft of the agenda included a discussion on produced water rulemaking, and then that was dropped. I was just wondering what the status of that was.
Thank you, Commissioner Brankard. Yes, at the previous, at last month's meeting, the Groundwater Quality Bureau of the NMED requested that they be placed on the agenda to describe their timeline for moving forward with produced water regulations. So we did add it to the agenda, but we were informed that due to other circumstances, that process has been placed on hold, and so they requested that we remove it from the agenda.
So it's not slated for a future agenda at this point?
Not at this time. It was on hold pending further notification.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, I think that concludes our discussion on next month's meeting, and I can adjourn today's meeting of the Water Quality Control Commission. Thank you all for your participation and good discussion and helped clarifying all of these procedural matters. So I look forward to seeing you all next month. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful afternoon and morning, for that matter.